Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, February 20th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. First, I'd like to say a big thank you to all of our public safety and public works personnel who are out keeping us safe overnight and this morning. It's really awesome for your dedication and for your service, especially on days like today. I'd also like to remind everyone that nominations for the 2019 Excellence in Public Service Awards are due on Friday, February 22nd at 5:00 PM. These awards recognize anyone from Sedgwick County, City of Wichita, and USD 259 who demonstrate outstanding work performance and service to the community. Commissioners, you have a full agenda this morning with several board appointments, donations for the Suicide Prevention Coalition, you'll consider a funding agreement with the Sedgwick County Fair Association, you'll receive the Quarterly Interest Bank Arena Report, and the Appraiser's Annual Report of Real Property Value Trends. You'll then consider an island annexation request from the City of Wichita, and there's two employment contracts under consideration, one for the acting county appraiser and one for a county manager, and finally, you'll have a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts. Chairman, I'll hand the meeting to you.
Thank you, Kate. Appreciate it, and I'd like to welcome everyone joining us this morning in the audience. It's fairly sparse today. Evidently, the weather is keeping folks away, but those that are here, welcome. Those that are watching us on TV, welcome. I also want to echo Kate's comments. David Spears, our Director of Public Works, is here today and is keeping us safe and cleaning our roads out in the country, and we definitely appreciate that. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order on Wednesday, February 20th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Brent Warkenton, First Menonite Brethren. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Father, you are good and kind, and we come before you and ask that you would give wisdom to these good county commissioners. We are grateful for their service, their love for our county, and I pray that as they deliberate and sometimes have different opinions about the best approach or direction, I pray that they would continue as they have to listen to each other and to express a real willingness to hear. We are grateful for our state, and we ask your blessing on this city and this county. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you for being here with us today. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't have anyone signed up right now to speak on the public agenda, but if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak, now we give you an opportunity. Seeing no one, next item, please.
Appointments. Item A, accept the resignation of Robert Vincent from the Sedgwick County Advisory Board for On-Site Waterwell Construction.
Mr. Chairman, interim County Counselor Mike Lapune, we received a letter from Mr. Vincent requesting that we accept his resignation from the Sedgwick County Advisory Board for On-Site Waterwell Construction, and would recommend that you accept the resignation.
Thank you. I know Bob Vincent, he happens to be one of my neighbors, and he's a good guy and definitely knows water well is going to be missed. I therefore move that we do accept his resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item B, accept the resignation of Rick Chase from the Sedgwick County Advisory Board for On-Site Waterwell Construction.
Commissioners, once again, Mike Lapune, interim County Counselor. This is another resignation from the Advisory Board for On-Site Waterwell Construction, this time by Mr. Rick Chase, and would ask that you accept his resignation.
Move to accept the resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item C, accept the resignation of Cindy Weber from the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Commissioner Mike Lapune, interim County Counselor, this was Commissioner Unruh's appointment to the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. We would ask that you accept the resignation of Ms. Weber.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Cindy, for your service, or Ms. Weber. So make a motion to accept the resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Levanta Williams to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Commissioners, Mike Lapune, interim County Counselor, we have prepared a resolution appointing Levanta Williams to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. This is Commissioner Cruz's appointment. The resolution's in proper legal form, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution for the appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Yes, Commissioners, Mike Lapune, interim County Counselor, we have prepared a resolution appointing Leah Gagne to the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
I know that she is here today, so I just want to say thank you for braving the weather, and I know that you'll be a good addition to this board if you want to go over here and...
You'll make a motion?
Oh, I make a motion that we accept the... What do I say? Resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Well, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disability Advisory Board. So help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you for the chance to serve on the board. I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for volunteering to serve. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item F, acceptance of donations totaling $1,740 for the Suicide Prevention Coalition.
Good morning, Joan.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Joan Tammany with Calm Care. I'm here today because we received donations for the Suicide Prevention Coalition totaling $1,740 from 17 distinct individuals or corporations. Families of four individuals in our community ask that any memorials be donated to a mental health organization of their choice or to the Suicide Prevention Coalition to continue to increase awareness around suicide prevention education. As any time I have an opportunity to stand and talk about suicide prevention, I want to just say that suicide and mental illness don't know a demographic distinction. Anyone, any age, any class, any race is potentially a victim of suicide, and the number of deaths in Sedgwick County continue to rise as well as those nationally highest among youth. Last year in Sedgwick County, we had 99 individuals who died as a result of suicide, and Calm Care believes that one is too many. So I just want to indicate that Calm Care has a workforce well-trained to talk and meet with people who are experiencing feelings of hopelessness or despair. We also do prevention education programs in the community like Mental Health First Aid, which gives people tools to recognize when somebody's struggling with mental illness, and resources that they can refer these individuals to. So our community crisis center is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. People can walk in, a friend can call, the patient can call, a family member can call, anybody in our community can drop by or call by dialing 660-7500. So I'm here to ask you to acknowledge the donations and authorize the chairman to sign the letters of appreciation.
Well, thank you, Joan. Thank you for being here today and bringing a very important message that we can share with the community. Also, thank you for bringing the information about some fantastic donations that help us in our quest to assist the folks that need help throughout our community. I appreciate very much what you do and what Calm Care does, and helping some of the citizens that are in most need of care. We have a couple of comments. First of all, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you so much for being here and all the work that you do. I just want to point out there is a suicide prevention walk coming up in September, so it's quite a ways away, but there is a planning meeting for that this Saturday at 10 o'clock at Rusty Eck Ford. So if anybody's interested in that, please join, because this is very near and dear to my heart. Both my uncle and my grandfather committed suicides, so this is something that is very important to me to make sure that it doesn't happen to anybody else. So thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz, you'd like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion we adopt or we accept the donation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you for bringing the message to us. Next item, please.
Item G, consideration of a funding agreement with the Sedgwick County Fair Association.
Morning, Brett.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the county commission. I'm Brett Shelton with the Division of Finance. And also with me today to share some specifics about this project is Valerie Castor. She's a Project Services Manager for Sedgwick County, and we're pleased that Brett Albers with the Sedgwick County Fair Association, he's the president of that organization, is with us here today as well. So before you is a funding agreement between Sedgwick County and the Sedgwick County Fair Association. The Fair Association is a volunteer-based organization. Their mission is to provide an atmosphere for families and friends to gather, and they have, since the 1940s, offered a slice of Americana to Sedgwick County in the form of the annual Sedgwick County Fair. Each summer, the attendance at the county fair approximates 25,000 people. The mission for the fair is free, so all those folks are provided that opportunity at no charge. Sedgwick County has for many years provided financial support to the Fair Association. This past year in budget for 2019 is $29,427, used to support the operations of the fair as well as some of the 4-H programs that are offered by the association. The association owns the fairgrounds in Chinny, and today they're requesting pursuant to this funding agreement, additional one-time funds of $100,000 to raise a building that's on the fairgrounds and replace it with a new structure similar to one that exists there today. The building is used for vendor displays, and it's basically outlived its useful life and isn't really a safe or desirable place to have vendor displays in public accessing that building during the fair. Should you approve the request, the new building would provide a better experience for vendors and attendees, reduce their maintenance and repair costs, and be a better experience. The funding agreement is established to provide the funds in one payment. It would be proposed it would come from 2019 funding, a transfer from BOCC contingency to Culture and Recreation Community Programs. And to recognize the county for their generosity and their support, the Fair Association has agreed to install a plaque next to the overhead and the walk-through doors recognizing the county for making this improvement possible. Before I turn it over to Valerie, we would recommend that you do approve the funding agreement and authorize the appropriate signatures. Let me invite Valerie up at this time, and she'll give you more specifics about the project.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Valerie Castor with Project Services. As Brett mentioned, I'm here to briefly discuss the Sedgwick County Fair, building number two with you. Building number two was erected in the late 1950s. It's a wood-built structure on a concrete footing. The main space of the building is approximately 25 by 80 by 10 feet to the ceiling. There's an attached 12 and 1/2 foot wide lean-to running along the west length of the building. It is showing a fair amount of wear and age due to its age and the elements. The siding and roof have holes, tears, and areas that have peeled back. The sliding doors have hardware issues, and have begun detaching from the walls in some places, making them very difficult to use. The trusses are Boeing due to a combination of age, reoccurring water penetration, and overspanning. There are large water stains on the walls and ceiling, as well as multiple areas of sag in the ceiling material. The building's electrical system is comprised of four different panels and is partially obsolete. Evans Building Company has provided a quote to the Sedgwick County Fair Association in the amount of $67,470 for a 50 by 80-foot pre-engineered metal building. It's 12 feet to the bottom of the eaves. This is proposed to replace building number two. This price includes gutters and downspouts, 4 inches of thick insulation for the roof and walls, two steel man doors, two framed openings for... and two framed openings for the overhead doors. Additional estimated approximate costs for the structure include $8,522 for an 8-foot liner panel, $20,000 to install a concrete slab, $15,000... $15,030 for two overhead doors, and $21,000 for basic electrical functions. Combined, this adds up to $132,000. If you look in the picture on the left, that's obviously building number two that's existing. On the right is their newer, building number three, and this is a pretty good representation of what the new building would look like that they are proposing to replace building number two with. Brett Albers with the Fair Association is here, and he's going to talk to you about the space and the layout of the proposed new building and how it would be an asset to the vendors and the fair.
Brett, welcome. I want to start off by saying thank you to every one of you for considering this, hearing us on this, and looking at what we're trying to do out there. We try to do as much as we can with as little as we can to provide the annual county fair. Building number two, we have gone in and tried to repair it several times. That building is used for vendor space. We call it indoor vendor space, but in July, it's indoor/outdoor. It's still hot. But it is indoor vendor space. We've really gotten to the point where we can't do much more with caulking and screws and wood patches and things like that. The building on the right is a good representation, as Valerie said, of what we're trying to do. Evans actually built that building as well, so they're familiar with getting the project to that point. So we feel like this would add value. We'd be able to add maybe some more vendors with some additional space. The lean-to on this building is really filled with stuff from 1954 to now, and we would actually, with the new building, be utilizing that space as vendor space, and then just we would create another little off-site maintenance shed somewhere else. So we would actually increase our vendor space with this project as well, over what we have now. So anyway, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to ask them, answer them if I've left anything out. I do appreciate your support on all this.
Thank you, Brett. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for either Brett, or Brent, or Valerie? I don't see any questions right now. We've... I know before the two newest Commissioners came on board, we've had a staff meeting that we've discussed this in the past, and it really came up as a discussion back during the last fair, when you and I were having dinner one night, talking about what the future of the fair was. Since that time, as I said, we've had a couple of meetings where we've talked about it. We've had a staff meeting where we've discussed it. The Sedgwick County Fair is a free fair for everyone in Sedgwick County, and we appreciate the Fair Board and what they've done each year to be able to provide a free fair for Sedgwick County. It starts out with a great parade downtown, and then ends up at the parade ground, where that, over, I think, three days, we have a fantastic fair. So this is something that I believe is needed at our fairgrounds, and I don't really see any other discussion, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the funding agreement and authorize the appropriate signatures.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. We appreciate it.
And thank you. I would like to invite, I know that we have some new Commissioners, all of you are welcome to come out. As Commissioner Dennis mentioned, we have dinner, and we're more than happy to buy dinner for anybody that wants to come out during the fair and kind of show you what we're doing out there. So there is an open invitation if you'd like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item H, Quarterly Interest Bank Arena Report.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Lindsay Pours, so you're CFO. I am here this morning along with AJ Beleski of SMG, who is the General Manager for the Interest Bank Arena, and we will do our routine quarterly report for you. However, of course, we just finished the fourth quarter, so we're really going to be giving you an update on 2018. I want to just take a moment to say thank you to AJ and his team at the arena, particularly the folks who work so closely with me. That includes Chris Whitney, Christine Polakas, and Ben Fekes for all their work, and then Dave Pericon, the intern in the county manager's office, who has worked very hard to prepare this report for you today. So 2018, of course, was an awesome year for the arena. We know that one of the driving forces in creating the arena in the first place and the way it is was to bring basketball to Wichita, and we got to see that vision come to life this last year when the NCAA men's basketball rounds one and two were here in town. And for anybody who was down and about in that area, it was just amazing, the energy and the enthusiasm from our community. And of course, being the CFO, I always want to talk about economic impact, right? And so we know that Visit Wichita was able to have an economic impact study done that showed that we had $5.5 million in new economic activity in our community in that four-day period from out-of-towners. We had another $3.5 million estimated from our local folks. And then from a government perspective, for all of the municipalities, Wichita, Sedgwick County, we expect that that generated an additional $0.5 million worth of sales tax revenues, hotel tax revenues, those kinds of things. So really, a very exciting time for Wichita. And maybe not as high-profile, but also on the sports front, we had the U.S. Figure Skating Synchronized Skating Sectional Championships. We had all kinds of concerts, from Pink to my favorite, Journey and Def Leppard, as you all got to hear about ad nauseam last year, plus Lindsey Stirling, Sugarland, James Taylor, Winter Jam, all kinds of great events. And we know that in 2019, we have a lot to look forward to. AJ's going to come up and talk through that, so I don't want to step on his toes, but everything from Metallica to Kenny Chesney. We know in 2020, it is the 10-year anniversary for the arena being opened. We know our colleagues at SMG are working hard to recruit some great events and shows for us. We know we get basketball back in 2021 and 2022, men's and women's. So lots to look forward to, and again, a great year for the arena. So as with all presentations, we do, we'll focus on a few core areas. We'll talk through the SMG agreement, recap a little bit of that. We'll talk about the status of our arena event parking agreement with the City of Wichita. We'll look at sales tax reserves, and then AJ will come up and talk about all the really fun stuff, what do we have to look forward to, and how SMG has been able, and the arena has been able to support our community. Now, it is important to note that the information we're going to talk about is based on SMG's performance. This is a lot of SMG data. Of course, the facility itself is on the county's books, and so that information is recorded in our quarterly financial report that Rick delivered to you a couple of weeks ago, but certainly can talk about any of that if we need to. So just to recap, SMG was hired back in 2007 to promote, manage, and operate the operations of the arena, and we do have a fairly unique agreement with them in that SMG has agreed to incur any operating losses in the course of a year, which thankfully, so far, we have not experienced in the nine-year, 10-year of the facility. But then we also have an agreement that was entered into back in 2014 where the forced $400,000 of operating income is retained by SMG, and then the rest is split between the county and the facility. The reason why I get to come here and talk to you about this is because I was appointed the contract administrator on behalf of the county back in 2016, and so I am a county employee, but I'm your primary liaison to AJ and his team at SMG, so that I can give you information, look at the CIP, kind of do that information, though you are involved. So in this, each quarterly report, we'll give you information on an annual basis. We'll talk about ticket sales, community affairs, and then, you know, the bottom line, financial information. So this slide shows you 2018 annual data. So in 2018, the arena hosted 94 performances, more than 350,000 folks attended, with more than $300,000 tickets sold. In total, gross ticket sales were more than $12.3 million, so that on average, the average cost per ticket sold was $40.93. Now again, the NCAA tournament did not have necessarily the cheapest tickets, but again, you were in for two sessions each day, and so that did have the effect of increasing that average ticket cost just a bit. Switching over to community affairs, we did have 183 groups that were able to volunteer at the concession stands at the arena during events. In total, that generated about $240,000 for those groups, so almost a quarter of a million. Spending with Sedgwick County, Kansas companies, we always like to look at this information, was nearly $3.9 million last year. Sales tax paid, which we all like too, particularly as government folks, was about 1.3 million, and you can see the number of presentation tours and local events and activities. So certainly an active place. So going to the financial summary then, there's going to be a lot of terms, a lot of rows on this next slide, and so it might be helpful to kind of flip back and forth between this slide and this next one, because it will kind of define what you're looking at. So in 2018, again, we talked about there were 94 performances. This shows how those were broken out. A number of concerts, family shows, and sporting events. You can see the Thunder had a good year with 38 different events. The Wichita Forest Indoor Football has always had six games. You can see some of those other self-promoted events, and then local community events that don't necessarily count toward performances. Between those events that are listed here, there was about $3.6 million in income generated from those events. Then when we take into account the other operating income that's received by the facility, that brought in about $5.5 million total. Of course, then we have to pay people to run the arena, do the administration, and so when we back that out, that total of about $4.9 million, that brings us to net building income of roughly $648,000. Now, this is where that profit sharing comes into play. So as we talked about before, under the current agreement, the county gets, well, SMG retains the first $400,000 of this, leaving $247,634, and then the remainder is split equally between SMG and the county, which means that once their audited statements are completed and returned over to us, we will get a check to depen... to deposit in the sales tax reserve fund of $123,817. This is particularly important because the agreement that was signed back in 2014 included an auto-renewal trigger. What that trigger was, that if from January 1st, 2015, through December 31st, 2019, if the county received $850,000 in total, then that contract would auto-renew through 2025. With this number, we have now well exceeded that $850,000 figure. We're at about $940,000 now. And so once we get those audited statements, it will begin time, or it will be time for us to begin discussions about updating that agreement. So something to look forward to here in the next few months. So looking at the arena sales tax reserve then, we know that the arena was fully paid for in advance from a 1-cent, 30-month sales tax. That generated about $206.5 million. The cost of the facility was about $191 million. So we were in the great position of being able to have a reserve of about $15 million at the time the building was open, to make sure that we could update that building as it needed, do enhancements through a CIP. And so now that we do have final numbers for 2018, we'll be updating those long-term projections for you. And at the same time, we're talking about the contract, we can talk through those figures. So that sales tax reserve can only be used for certain things, again, because this was a voter-approved sales tax. That includes major repairs or capital equipment. If we had to ever pay the city of Wichita to operate the parking lots, if maybe they lost money, that would come from this. We've never had to invoke that yet, thankfully. And then, of course, we know what we affectionately call the Coleman Lot. It was something that was constructed to help support parking at the arena, and so any maintenance on that lot would, could also be paid for out of this. So at the end of the year, the bottom line is that that reserve is down to about $8.6 million. And you can see on this slide how that has gone up and down throughout the course of the year. Here is where you can see the revenues coming into that fund for the course of a year, about 1.5 million in all the various sources. Then the next three slides show you the expenses. The emergency repairs, the capital improvement projects, the ticket allowances and everything that we pay to the arena on behalf of our sponsors. And so you can see how all of those are broken out, so that while we brought in 1.5 million to the fund, about $2.5 million was expended. Which is why if we go back to Slide 10, you'll see that that balance started at about 9.9 million at the beginning of 18, ended at about 8.6 million beginning this year. So unless you all have questions for me, I'll bring A.J. up to the podium to do his portion of the presentation, or certainly I'll be happy to come back up after he's completed as well.
Thank you, Lindsey. I don't see any questions for you at this time.
Okay.
Morning, A.J.
Good morning, Commissioners. A.J. Beleski with SMG and Intrust Bank Arena. Just wanted to say hello and welcome, and thank you for having us here. And thank you to Lindsey for the presentation. You'll see in front of you kind of our quarterly report on as far as some of the nonprofit events that we've been involved in and service projects. Again, you'll see a lot of ticket donations. We take a lot of pride in that. We try to never say no to nonprofit requests. And I know the last time we looked at this, we were about $40,000 a year in ticket donations that we make back to this local community. Fourth quarter for us, Kansas Food Bank was one of the service projects that we do. It's become a tradition at the arena. The Salvation Army Angel Tree is another one. So, and then obviously, United Way Campaign in October that we annually contribute to and all of our staff are involved in. So those are a few of the things from a service project standpoint. And then we continue to, on a first-come, first-served basis, use our marquee that faces Kellogg on the south side of the arena for nonprofits. One nonprofit per month gets rotation on that marquee. So we continued that throughout the fourth quarter as well. You will also see our upcoming events on this list. We just finished up, we had a pretty busy January, February, March in our past and also coming up. We had four in a row in February. We had February 7, 8, 9, and 10. We had Luke Combs, which was a sold-out event. We had the Globetrotters that weekend, Jeff Dunham and Winter Jam as well, which is a Christian show. It's a $15 admission at the door for that event. It's become an annual event for us. And then coming up, we have Monster Jam this week, so the snow came in at a great time. We'll bring in Dirt right after the snow this week and have Monster Trucks on Saturday, Sunday. And then coming up in March, we have three concerts in four days. We get excited about stuff like that. We have Dirk Spentley on March 1st, Kelly Clarkson, her first time ever in Wichita, I believe, on March 2nd. And then, for the first time in many years, Metallica, which has been on, we've been talking about for a while, actually went on sale over a year, just about a year ago. And we're excited to be bringing that on March 4th. And then we'll follow that up with UFC on March 9th, again, their first time in the state of Kansas. So we're pretty excited about that event and then several other events following. So that's kind of what it, what things look like for us, really busy time of the year. Lindsey touched on 2018, obviously some very exciting events culminating with the NCAA tournament. We also sold out Pink and we sold out Imagine Dragons. So we've had a lot of focus on getting a diverse range of shows. We had Kevin Hart last year as well. So those are three examples of that. And the fact that we were able to sell out Pink and Imagine Dragons, those are, those are great, and that'll lead to more. It kind of skews toward that younger audience, and we're trying to get a mix of everything. So we feel like it was a good year for that. And I think we ended up with 13 concerts in 2018. We've already announced 13 concerts for 2019. So Lindsey alluded to it, but it does seem to be a very busy year from a concert standpoint. That's, that's kind of a budget driver for us, as we've noticed over the years. And so we anticipate that being much the same in this upcoming year, 2019. And then, as Lindsey also mentioned, we are getting ready, starting to prepare, starting to book shows for that, our 10-year anniversary in 2020. So that's the end of my report, but definitely available for any questions that you might have.
Good. Well, thank you. First of all, we do have another event coming up that we're going to vote on here in a little bit on figure skating. So that's something that's exciting. Do you want to expound on what the possibilities are on that?
Yes, so we have hosted, as mentioned, the U.S. Figure Skating and the Synchronized Sectionals in 2018. That's coming back in 2020. That was a bid that we won this year, along with the NCAA Women's Regional. We won that this year. And then the ECHL All-Star Game is going to come in 2020. So we've hosted the synchronized sectionals, will have been twice after that. And then this bid is for the U.S. Figure Skating Championships. So this is kind of the marquee event for that organization. This is the event that you see on NBC every year. I think it just happened in Detroit a couple of weeks ago. And so we appreciate the partnership of Visit Wichita and Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita in working to attempt to try to bring this event to Wichita. Should be, would be a great event. You know, we have a couple of things that the figure skating really likes. Number one, they love our facility. When they first toured for synchronized sectionals, they said, "We want to bring the figure skating championships here. We'd love to host that event." And then the other thing is, within about six blocks of us, we have two more sheets of ice at the city of Wichita, the Ice Center. And so that, not a lot of cities and communities have that, and that's a great strength for us and this community as we go after the ice skating events. So we're excited for it, and we appreciate your support of it.
Good. Commissioner Howell has a comment.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, yes, one question for A.J. and then maybe one for Lindsey after that. But first of all, thank you for the presentation. It's great to see Intrust Bank Arena doing very well. I think that that's the takeaway, is it's doing very well, and I think the community really appreciates it. I am curious, though, with the, with the baseball stadium going in, has anybody thought about how that might impact some of the events, whether they would happen at the baseball stadium versus Intrust Bank Arena? What's the, what's the sense of how that might impact what's been going on over at the, over at the arena?
Well, there's, there's obviously been a lot of different event centers that have come on board. And we feel like it all fits together very well when you look at all of us. There's, there's a lot of arenas in this community. We have Hartman Arena, Kansas Star Casino Arena, Wichita State, then you've got us. Wave just came on board downtown as well, the club. So there's a lot of different sizes. The baseball stadium's another example of that. We feel like they kind of, it just creates this, you know, this great platform for us to host, for this community to host all kinds of different events, all different sizes, indoors, outdoors, whatever it may be. And so hopefully, you know, we can, it makes all of us successful, because each of us is. And that's what we see at the baseball stadium. I think they said 200 events a year, so a lot of that's in the summertime. We're a little slower in the summertime, so I think it, it fits and fits well.
Very good. All right, well, that's a great answer. Thank you for, thank you for that. And I have a couple of questions on the parking. I see on the report that the city does parking on lots A, B, C, and D, but I see on the map that we also have lots, I guess, what's called the ADA lot, straight to the south. We have lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 around the building. Regarding the, the lots around the building, are those fee required to park in those areas around the building? Not, not lots A, B, and C and D, but lots 1, 2, 3, and 4 in the, in the area that's straight south of the building, the ADA lot there?
So the onsite lots at the, at the building, we have, it's around 275 spaces, I believe. So first and foremost, those are for premium seat holders. So one lot is for suite holders, the other one is load box and club seats. And then we have a small lot that holds for our staff. When the premium seat holders are not using their, their tickets for set events, we then are able to sell those spaces to the public, and so that's what we do now. The rate varies depending on the event, anywhere from 10 to usually $15. And then ADA is, is obviously part of that. We have about 36, I want to say ADA spots onsite. Those are sold for the going, the same going rate as the city lots, so it's a $4 rate for the ADA spaces. And that's kind of what it looks like now. Now, there are some events, when we have a sold-out event and every premium seat holder is coming, that we don't have any onsite parking for the public, with the exception of ADA, that exists for every single event that we have.
And has the ADA charge been that way since the very beginning of the?
When we first opened, I believe the first six months, the ADA parking was free onsite. And then we changed that to $4 to mirror exactly what the city was doing in all the city lots. And, and so it's been the same ever since then, since probably fall of 2010. I think we started with the hockey season in 2010.
How much revenue is generated from the $4 for the ADA spaces? Do we know kind of a summary how much impact that is on our total budget here?
I don't have the, the number right off the top of my head, but I can tell you that parking in general for us is kind of a wash. By the time you, it takes about six staff to operate our parking lots for every event. So by the time you factor in that, versus, we're not really able to sell all that much public parking, because a lot of it is used by the premium seat holders. So it's, it's a little bit of a wash. There's probably some income there. We'll get that number for you. But it doesn't add up to a huge amount.
I've had the question a couple of times from folks in the community. I just wanted to understand it a little bit deeper, because they, again, their opinion is they, they don't have any options, and I guess to them, it's a bit of a surprise that ADA parking would cost them money, but they could park further away, further away and avoid the cost. But of course, that kind of defeats the whole point. So anyways, just an interesting topic. I appreciate the extra information. So then, Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion. We receive and file a report.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We do have a couple more comments. Commissioner Meitzner.
A.J., on that slide that you have up there, the U.S. Figure Skating, what, what year is that? Does that say 19? But that's not right, right? Is it 21, I thought?
I think it's January 15th through the 19th of 2019.
Yeah, that should be in 2020. I think we've set a typo there. So it's in 2020. That's the synchronized sectionals in 2020. And then the U.S.
That's what we're, what we're bidding on, is?
The one we're bidding on is the U.S. Figure Skating Championships. So it's, it's different than the synchronized sectionals event. But that is, that's alluding to the synchronized sectionals, and that's in 2020. So we'll get that fixed.
Okay. And then, thanks as well to you and Lindsey for, I know we had a wonderful, couple-hour meeting with the, the owners of the baseball organization. They toured your place, and you were very hospitable, and a lot of great dialogue about just what you were meaning about complimentary, complimentary events that, that they may be hosting that are not interest favorable, and same with, same with your, your events. So it was good, but it was a good day, and thank you for, and I know they very much appreciated the time that you both spent and your staff. So thank you.
Yeah, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you for the presentation. I love seeing all these donated tickets. Do you have an amount for how much you donated in 2018, total donation of tickets?
We can get that exact number for you. We've done the, we've averaged about $40,000 a year in donated tickets. But we'll get an updated number for you.
Okay, thanks.
For 18.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. One of the things that I always like to see, say when I come over, when we've got another event that's coming up that we're announcing, is that that wouldn't have been possible without the citizens in Sedgwick County voting for the sales tax. It was a limited period of time. Things that are happening over there are completely as a result of our citizens in Sedgwick County. So I want to thank them again for everything that they do to make this a great place to live. The fact that we are getting a baseball stadium, I think, is great, but I think it's going to have a synergistic effect with all of the different events that we've got, because they're a little bit different, what they can do over at the baseball field and what we can do inside. And finally, well, a couple of things. First of all, we are going to talk about the U.S. Figure Skating Championship that you mentioned. And the place that they go next after that is the Olympics, from what I understand. So that, that's an important event that'll be coming up for us, if we can win that. And hopefully, we can. And I love going there. The concerts that we have and the events that we have there are something that enhances everyone's quality of life. And I truly am very happy that I got tickets to Alan Jackson. So the last time I mentioned that with the mayor, he wanted to know which one of the Jackson brothers that was. So you can see, he's not quite as sophisticated as some of the rest of us. Anyway, I don't see any other comments. With that, we do have a motion and a second to receive and file. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item I, Presentation of the Appraiser's Annual Report of Real Property Value Trends in Sedgwick County.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mark Clark, Intram County Appraiser. This morning, I will be presenting the 2019 Annual Real Estate Mass Appraisal Report to you. The mass appraisal was conducted for every taxing authority located within the boundaries of Sedgwick County, including Sedgwick County Government plus the state of Kansas. Let's go over a few of the duties of the Appraiser's Office. Physically, we physically inspect every property within Sedgwick County every six years. We discover, list, and value all property that had significant changes, and that includes new construction, sales, natural disasters, things of that sort, demolitions. Update appraisals each year to assure that all properties are valued at fair market value, and the statutory appraisal date is January 1st. Now, there are several key dates that I want to go over with you that do major impacts the Appraiser's Office in a major way. First, as we said, the appraisal date is January 1. March 1st, that is when we will mail the real property valuation notices. March 15th, personal property renditions are due to the County Appraiser's Office. March 19th, real property informal meetings begin. May 1st, personal property valuation notices are mailed. May 15th, personal property informal meetings begin. And June 1st, we certify real and personal appraised and assessed values to the county clerk. And that is a lot of work from March 1st to June 1st. We're very busy, but we're handling it very well. June, July 15th, the county clerk certifies the abstract to PVD, that's the Property Valuation Division of the Kansas Department of Revenue. August 25th, governing bodies certify budgets to the county clerk. And November 1st, the county clerk certifies the tax rule to the county treasurer. Parcel growth in Sedgwick County once again increased for 2019. From 2018 to 2019, there were a total of 840 parcels that, we grew an additional 840 parcels. And that is a good indication that economic activity is moving forward. is a good indication that economic activity is moving forward in Sedgwick County. Sales activity actually decreased by 2.1% from 2017 to 2018. Rising interest rates have caused concern, and they have dampened some, have had a dampening effect. Nevertheless, some residential stratifications in the, in the real estate market have definitely seen and enjoyed a lot of activity. And we'll get more to that in just a minute. Residential property represents about 57% of the total assessed value in Sedgwick County. New dwelling construction. Now, this slide here, it taught, this is measured by single family homes, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. And basically, there was a decrease of 14.3% from 2017 to 2018. Interest rate increases and rising building costs and labor shortages definitely were major contributory factors in the decrease. Also, natural disasters across the nation, hurricanes and fires increased costs, and it did pull skilled labor out of our market. Skilled labor will always seek higher wages. And we had, definitely had national disasters, and they're trying to rebuild in parts of Texas, Florida, North Carolina. And we had the wildfires out in the West. Median sales price for Sedgwick County in 2018 increased to $160,000. That represents a 2.9% increase in the median sales price. Also, that price point is within one of the residential stratifications that has really been active. And if you have a home that is ready to go, people are ready to buy it. They move quickly. And so the residential market has been very active in that particular stratification. Commercial. Commercial property represents 31% of the total assessed value in Sedgwick Commercial property sales, they increased only slightly. However, there is pent up demand, but it is heavily impacted by the fear or the concern of increased interest rates. And so that has dampened some sales activity. Nevertheless, they continue to watch the Fed to see what is happening, and it is impacting that market. Commercial building activity, commercial building permit activity, excuse me, was down 3.9%. Rising interest rates and increased costs, shortages of skilled labor hampered that building permit activity. Also, projects continue to be bid on. However, the amount of time that it takes to get a project done in Sedgwick County is continuing to get longer. If you look at and go talk to various construction companies, they will tell you there is a major shortage of skilled labor, and it is having a very major impact. The 2018 Preliminary Appraisal Sales Ratio Study. This is a study that is conducted by the Property Valuation Division, and they measure our performance based on this. Also, it is part of substantial compliance. Substantial compliance, you have statutory and procedure compliance, and that is worth 50 points. And then for the other 50 points, you have the appraisal sales ratio study. When we got this in late 2018, we knew that we were looking at having to raise values. If you look, you can see that the ratios for residential and commercial are below 90%. The law requires that those ratios be between 90 and 110. Both residential and commercial were below 90. And so we did, in fact, raise values. Our office uses a common sense, cautious, and conservative approach of targeting a 95% ratio. And you don't want to overshoot and put it at one, target one and above. You don't want to undershoot and put it at 90. So you look at one to 90. Median is 95% ratio. That makes sense. It is a typical methodology that is utilized by jurisdictions our size. Once again, that is a common sense and conservative approach for Sedgwick County. Agricultural. This slide is, always amazes me. 438,764 acres or 68% of the land in Sedgwick County is devoted to agricultural use. Agricultural property represents less than 1% of the total assessed value in Sedgwick County. And it is property valuation who sets the agricultural use values for the state. They get those values from K-State, they work with K-State, they send those to us, and we load them into our CAMA system, CAMA Being Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal System. So now we come to the slide that everybody's waiting for. The 2019 Valuation Summary. For residential parcels, 11% experienced a no change in value. 78% increased in value with a typical change of 4.5%. 11% of residential parcels decreased in value. Commercial parcels, 44% of the commercial values changed, excuse me, had a no change in value. 42% of the parcels experienced an increase in value, and the typical change for commercial was 5%. 14% of the commercial parcels decreased in value. Agricultural parcels, 1% experienced a no change in value. 52% increased in value with a typical change of 1.5%. And 47% of agricultural parcels decreased in value. Mailing Real Property Value Notices. Approximately 180,000 real property value notices will be mailed for 2019. That represents 81% of all properties in Sedgwick County. The Appraiser's Office will not mail a value notice to everyone. There will be some property owners who will not get a value notice because they did not experience a change in the appraised value or classification from 2018. So how do you go about getting your value notice if one isn't mailed to you? Property owners who do not receive a notice in the mail may view the appraisal information for their property beginning March 1 online at www.sedgwickcounty.org. After March 1, they can go and print that notice off. It'll have all the information on the back for appealing their value, if that's what they wish to do. And it will look the same as if you actually got one in the mail. Now, the appeals process. If owners don't think their values reflect fair market value, or if they would like an explanation of how their value was determined, they can turn the value notice over, fill out the back of the notice, and return it to the Sedgwick County Appraiser's Office within 30 days of the date indicated on the front of the notice. An appeal meetings begin March 19, 2019. Our Information and Assistance Staff located on the fifth floor over at the Ronald Reagan Building at 271 is ready to help people in preparing for their appeals. And appraisers will be actively listening and looking at people's documentation and to make their determinations. Customer service is paramount. Also, there is a statement that PVD usually likes appraisers to put out. So I will read this. Please remember that the county appraiser is required by law to value property in a uniform and equal manner, and should not be considered an adversary. An increase in value does not necessarily result in an increase in taxes. The review, the revenue needed for local services is set during budget hearings. Increase or decreases in property values do not change the amount of tax dollars needed for local services. Customer service. As I said, customer service is, is a high expectation of mine. I do know that PVD has been stressing the need for customer service. And Commissioners, I know that you expect customer service as well. And it will be provided. So our Information and Assistance Division is ready and willing to provide assistance to property owners who are trying to decide whether they want to appeal or preparing for an appeal. They can physically visit our office. They can go on the website. They can call us. They can email us. And we will be glad to provide the sales and values in their neighborhood. The neighborhood number is located on their value notice, and we are ready to serve. In conclusion, I am proud of the work, I am pleased and proud of the work of the Sedgwick County Appraiser's Office staff performed for the 2019 Real Property Mass Appraisal. And I thank them. They've worked hard. They're a good staff. And I enjoy working with them. They're, they're very good. To the public, I thank the public for utilizing our services, and we encourage them to continue coming to us for assistance. And Commissioners, I thank you for allowing me to come to you and present today. That concludes my presentation, and I will stand for any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mark. First question is from Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mark. Very helpful. And appreciate the last month or so when we were able to, I was able to come to your office and visit with you and the staff. It was, it was very helpful.
Thank you.
Couple of clarifications on your slides. Slide number five, the sales activity. Is that, what is, that's not sales tax activity, or is it?
No, that is the number of sales. Residential sales, commercial sales, properties that are sold.
Okay.
When properties are sold, SVQs are logged with the Register of Deeds, and then they flow to us through the clerk.
Okay. Another question on slide 10. So those, that 566, that's just how many commercial properties were sold, just existing properties were sold?
Correct.
Compared to the next slide, 11, is commercial property, we had 1,100 new commercial permits? Is that?
That's permits, but that there doesn't necessarily mean new properties. It can be
Remodels.
Remodels, all kinds of things that require building permits.
additions, whatever.
Yes.
Okay. And then my last question finally would be on slide 14. I appreciate that. That's a great slide. And but, so for instance, the first section, 11% decrease in value? Was there a reason, do we have a typical change? Was a decrease of 4.5%?
I can get that for you. Yes, I can get that for you.
You did that in all three categories. I appreciate the increase, but I was just wondering what the decrease was.
I can be
Plus, it was bad news that you didn't want to share.
No, no, no. I will be glad to provide that.
Okay. If it's, if it's earth shattering, that's great. If not, that's just something maybe for the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I know this is a time we're in the process of doing, looking for a new appraiser. So you stepped up into this role, and you think you're doing a great job. So I want to say thank you for presenting today and for managing the office, and you think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
So with respect to the ratio study, the slide says less than 90%. What is the state requirement range? That was 90 to 100, or 90 to 105, or?
It's 90 to 110.
90 to 110?
Yes. And that is the same as what IWA, that's the International Association of Assessing Officers, requires. And interestingly enough, we have a growing number of people in Kansas that now are on the board of IWA, and the Director of PVD has just been elected to that board. So yes, we are continuing to put more professional standards in, in the statutes.
And we do this every year? This is a 2018 number?
Yes.
Right now, it's less than 90%?
It is. Now, it should be higher than 90% because we targeted 95.
You made corrections in the, in the values in the summary. I see that. So one of the things in the summary that I think I may have seen in the past, but I'm not sure about that, was the average decrease number. Is that something that's available as well?
We can definitely get that.
That might be helpful to know what the average decrease, average decrease was. And I would ask, I would ask for that if it's available. I would appreciate that information.
Yes, sir.
Just as a comment, I don't know that I've seen this slide before, but I've wondered about this in the past. I think it's a very interesting takeaway here that 68%, in fact, I did the calculation based on your number of acres, 67.94% of Sedgwick County is classified as agricultural property, which I think is a very interesting number. I was, guessed it was around 70%, but now I've been validated in that, in that number. And I know as we talk about consolidation, there's actually a bill in the House right now that is asking for consolidation between Wichita and Sedgwick County. One of the, one of the things we always compare ourselves to is Wyandotte County. But just as a comparison, Wyandotte County, I don't think has hardly any agriculture. I'm trying to find that number still. But it only has 160,000 residents and 152, 152 square miles. We have 1,009 square miles. So we're much different than Wyandotte County in many different ways. That's just kind of a takeaway from this report, which I appreciate the information. And then I want to, I also wanted to just make a comment. I think one of the most difficult offices in Sedgwick County is, is the Appraiser's Office. Only, difficult in terms of difficult job to do or challenging job to do because it's subjective, it's subjective in nature, but you try to do your best to make it objective.
True.
And that's the challenge. You are using lots of tools that you're, within your office to, to make it that way. And so I appreciate, appreciate what you're doing there in the office and the staff that supports all that goes on there. I do have another comment, and that is, and this might be for Mr. Papoon. How long ago was it, or maybe it's for Patricia, I don't know. How long, how long ago was it when we had the Local Appeals Board?
The HOPS panel?
Yes.
I believe the last time that would have been 95, 96?
I think so. I think we, it ended in mid 90s.
Because if I remember correctly, small claims came online somewhere around 1997.
Okay. Is there anything legislatively that would require for us to revisit that and consider reinstating a Local Appeals Board?
I believe that there is a piece of legislation out there that is pending. And to tell you the truth, my fear is that if you continue adding, and I shouldn't say you, if we continue to add more levels of appeals, it gets so administrative, and it gets so expensive. And then not only do you get burnout from staff, you're going to get burnout from property owners, and everybody's just going to be frustrated.
If I could, if I could
Sure, certainly, please.
Thank you. Patricia Parker, Assistant County Counselor. Commissioner, there, the county could reinstitute the hearing officer panel if it's so desired. And so that would not require, obviously, it would require additional funding on your part, but it would not require a change in law for that.
Well, what I'm concerned about is, of course, if it's a local appeal, they can certainly do their appeal here in Wichita. We have roughly one sixth, one sixth of the state's population here in Sedgwick County. And the only, the next step after that is a, is a physical, personal presence at the Board of Tax Appeals in Topeka. Am I saying that correctly? So I think there's two ways to address that. Number one, I'd like, I'd like to see them start to allow a telephone virtual appeal in Topeka. In other words, not, not an in-person presence, but do that, do it virtually at BOTA. But short of that, I think the, the, the Local Appeals Board, let me call it the HOP, the HOP Board, I think is something we ought to, ought to consider because there's an awful lot of taxpayers here in Sedgwick County. To put, put the burden on them to have to go to Topeka, to me is, is, I guess I'm sensitive to that. So.
I understand. I would like to make a clarification. And that is, after the informal appeal meeting, they, residential people, property owners can go to small claims. Small claims appeals are handled locally. They are either handled at the Extension Center, or they are, sometimes they may be in Eldorado, or they may be at the Andover Library. But there, they can do phone hearings. in El Dorado, or they may be at the Andover Library, but there, they can do phone hearings, and, and, or they can, it's not too far to drive. They don't have to go to Topeka for a small claims hearing.
All right, well, I'll continue thinking about this, and appreciate that, that information. I think as a matter of discussion, we might want to consider what are the options for our taxpayers if they want to make an appeal, and if there's any interest in reinstating that board, I guess I'd like to have a discussion about doing that potentially, I think something we ought to talk about, so. Thank you for that, and again, I would be pleased to make a motion to receive and file a report.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Just a couple of questions. One is if I take a look at the total number of, of private dwellings, it's 57 percent, and the commercial is 31 percent, and agriculture is 1 percent, that adds up to like 88 percent. What's the other 12?
Excuse me, Commissioner, where are you at?
If you look at your slide, it says residential property on slide number six is 57 percent, and then on slide nine it says residential's 31 percent, and on slide 13 it says agriculture's 1 percent. That adds up to 88 percent.
Yes, there are, I did take a slide out, I didn't want to make this too long, there are other classifications which do make up the other percentage.
Okay, very good.
My misunderstanding, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that I got to 100 someplace.
You didn't miss anything.
Okay. The only other comment I make, and then remember our commission needs to be departing in about an hour, so we can't spend too much time on any of the rest of the items today, but I just want to make a point that 47 percent of agricultural parcels decreased in value, and there's a reason for that, is because crop prices are way down.
That is true.
And that's what drives the value. The majority of my district, as far as square miles, is agricultural land, so that's something that we're very sensitive of in District Three, and since I also own a farm, it's sensitive to me personally.
I understand.
Values are going down, but that's totally the reason it's a five-year rolling average.
It's an eight.
Eight-year, eight-year rolling average, I'm sorry, thanks for the correction. But as prices keep going down, and I guarantee you this year prices went down again, that that's going to continue to have an impact on us.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, we have a motion to receive and file, and we do need to move on, so Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item J, acting county appraiser contract with property valuation division.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hi, Patricia.
Patricia Parker, Assistant County Counselor. We're here this morning to approve and authorize the chairman to sign an agreement for an acting county appraiser from the Division of Property Valuation. As you know, Mr. Clark has been our interim county appraiser for these past six months, and the law provides for a one-time, six-month appointment for an interim. It does not authorize an extension of that appointment, it does not authorize reappointment. So, in situations such as these, the property valuation division provides one of their employees, who is a qualified appraiser, in this case it is Raylene Schnacker, to serve as an acting county appraiser, to perform functions that the county appraiser would perform in managing and overseeing the county appraisal office. In this situation, perhaps that would be different in, in other counties, Mr. Clark will continue to perform all the functions he's providing right now, the only thing he won't really be doing would be official acts that the county appraiser would be called to do, such as signing reports and, and that type of thing. So when Ms. Schnacker is acting as a, acting county appraiser, she will be paid a sum of $39.68 an hour, they will invoice, they, meaning the property valuation division, will invoice basically on a monthly basis to us for the time that she would spend in that capacity. The term of this appointment, or this agreement, begins March 1, 2019, when Mr. Clark's interim appointment ends, and September 1, 2019, and this period of time is what we believe will provide the county a sufficient amount of time to get the new county appraiser hired and onboard. So, with that being said, I would ask that the board authorize, approve the agreement and authorize the chairman to sign. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Parker? I don't see any questions. Mark's done a great job for us, his interim for six months, we appreciate that very much, and we do have people out ahead, right now, working for Cedric County to find us a permanent appraiser, so we're working through that process, and this is, is an opportunity to comply with state law, and at the same time have all of the dots, T's crossed and I's dotted.
I, I might also add quickly that Ms. Schnacker, Raylene Schnacker, has an established relationship with the Cedric County Appraisers Office and works with Mark and other staff members, so it's not like they're sending, they're going to have somebody unknown to the county, so I just wanted to make that point.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Oh, no, I was, thank you, I just had a question, but I see it, thank you.
I make a motion that we authorize the chairman to approve and sign the contract.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item K, island annexation request from the city of Wichita.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mike Papun, interim county counselor. Justin Wagner would normally be doing this, but he's in Topeka testifying and helping testify on behalf of a bill we have up there today, so I'll present this on behalf of the county. It's a proposed island annexation by the city of Wichita for property located at the southeast, located on Rock, South Rock Road, to the southeast of the intersection of Rock and 31st Street South. See if I can do this right. The property proposed to be annexed includes the 44 acres and is outlined in yellow on this slide. The purple coloring indicates property that's currently owned by the city of Wichita, and the rest of the property is the unincorporated area of the county. This is a zoom out of the same, same area, this map is zoned out, zoomed out a bit further at the time. This time the annexed property is the greenish crosshatching that you can see on the slide, just to the east, this property is just to the east of McConnell Air Force Base, again the purple coloring there, more, probably a mauve, indicates the city of Wichita, and you can see the city of Derby in pink below, the bottom of the map, and the gray coloring indicates, once again, the unincorporated area. An island annexation is when the annexed land is not adjoining the city of Wichita, wherein you'd have a unilateral, unilateral annexation in most cases. State statute lays out the requirements in which an island annexation can occur, which includes that the land is required to be located in the same county as the city where it is. The owners of the property must petition or consent to the annexation, and in this case, the owner has petitioned for annexation into the city of Wichita. The Board of County Commissioners, by a two-thirds vote, finds that the annexation will not hinder and prevent proper growth and development of the area, or that, or that of any other city within Cedric County. In our case, this requires a four, four votes on behalf of the commission. The city of Wichita submitted the request to the county to make the aforementioned findings for the proposed island annexation. The MAPD review recommended that the Board of County Commissioners find that the proposed island annexation would not hinder the proper, proper growth and development of the area, nor any other city in Cedric County. The property is within the city of Wichita's 2035 growth area, it is not located within the growth area of any other city in Cedric County. Derby is the closest city, and its city limits are roughly three miles from this area. This property is currently undeveloped land, there are subdivisions in the west of the property that have previously been annexed into the city, but those parcels do not enjoy this, enjoy, adjoin the city's contiguous boundaries, and under Kansas, Kansas law, you can't use an island annexation to have a unilateral annexation. For the proposed annexation area, on December 27, 2018, the subdivision committee for MAPC approved a preliminary plat for the Rocky Ford Third Edition, which would create, create 113 lots for the development of single-family homes. Pursuant to the annexation, the city would provide police and fire services, which are currently provided by the Cedric County Sheriff's Office and Cedric County Fire District Number One. It's our understanding the property owner has requested to be annexed into the city of Wichita in order to have the city water and sewer services extended to this property. Pursuant to the county's annexation procedures, we have emailed relevant county staff of this action. In addition to the report from MAPD, Public Works also indicated they did not have any concerns with the proposed annexation. I would be happy to try to address any additional questions on this annexation, and Mr. Scott Knabel from the city of Wichita seated over here is also here to address any, any questions from the standpoint of the city of Wichita.
Well, thank you, Mr. Papun. Each of the commissioners have been briefed individually on this item, and I believe it's in Commissioner Howell's district, do you want to make a motion?
Just have a couple of quick questions, then I'll make a motion, but just wanted to confirm, MAPC, was that a unanimous vote over there, do we know?
That I don't know, you know, Scott?
I couldn't, I couldn't find that in the backup material, but I would assume it was.
The, at this point, the only thing that's going to the planning commission would be the plat of the property, so far only, only thing that's been filed is a preliminary plat, which was approved unanimously by the subdivision committee, but it's yet to go to the full planning commission.
And one of the, one of the maps in the backup material shows the, the access to this, 113 lots will be from the existing island annexation straight to the west, that's, so it's not going to the 39th Street?
That, that's correct. There are provisions for the plats of this property to make additional street connections to the northeast and south at some time that those properties develop and would, would, you know, create a, a existing street connection system, but right now the only access is off Rock Road to the west.
All right, very good. Don't think you have any other, any other questions, just, I guess finally, was there any, any noted opposition from the neighbors or anything like that? I didn't see that in the.
There has been no noted opposition regarding the plat of this property, no.
Very good. Was there, was there notification sent out to anybody?
The notification on plats is a sign that's posted on the property prior to the hearing.
All right, well, again, I, I've not received any, any, any concerns from the people that live out there. I would note that because of McConnell Air Force Base, base housing, which is straight to the north, to connect this to the city of Wichita would be, would be very unlikely, unless they grow to the east first, which would be a significant amount of growth, and so this is going to be a very popular housing subdivision, and I, and I do support it. I'm excited to see some, some houses go up in that area, and I think it's the right thing for us to do today, to do today, so with that, I'm pleased to make the, the motion. We take the recommended action.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item L, presentation of county manager's employment agreement.
Mr. Papun?
Yes, Commissioners, Mike Papun, interim county counselor, again, and I'd ask that you defer this item to later in the meeting.
Make a motion to defer until after we have an executive session. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item M, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Special Meeting on February 13, 2019.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We had a special meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts last Wednesday, and there are three items that we'd like for you to consider for recommendation. Item number one is the on-call commercial real estate broker services for Facilities Department, and this recommendation is to accept the proposal from Martins Commercial Group LLC, and they are doing business as NAI Martins for the rates listed, and this is for a one-year period with four one-year options to renew. Our second item is the SAP Maintenance Renewal for Enterprise Resource Planning, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from SAP Public Services in the amount of $460,516.17. And our final item today is the road improvement, and this is the 61st Street North between 151st and 167 Streets West, and this is for Public Works. We're asking that you accept the bid for alternate number one from Andale Construction Incorporated, and this is in the amount of $586,920.30. And your acceptance of this request is contingent upon your accept, approval of the CIP amendment, and that will be item P in today's consent agenda. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have and approval, recommend approval of these items.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
I just have one question, thank you for the presentation. On the, on the on-call commercial real estate broker services, on that one line it talks about each will be, the cost will be split equally between the buyer and the seller, is that true for the 6 percent, the 4 percent, and the 2 percent?
It's for all of them, I believe, it's for all.
All three of those?
Yes, it's for all three.
Very good. And then in terms of the proceeds from the auction, we did not use Martins for the Greyhound Park, we have, do we have the right to deviate from this if we want to use a different firm for the auction purposes?
We have, we can deviate.
Okay, very good. I have no other questions, just to make a note that the ICM is going to get its road paved, and that's part of this as well, so I would be pleased to make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Morning, Commissioners, Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items N through W.
Move to approve November through whiskey?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Mr. Papun?
Yeah. Good morning again, Mr. Commissioners, Mike Papun, interim county counselor, be brief. We were up in Topeka this morning, had county staff testifying on behalf of House Bill 2238, which is our eminent domain bill. Justin Wagner from our office, and Chris Labram from, Director of MAPCD was up there. And with the aid of modern technology, I've got a text from him, and apparently it went really well. The only opposition, significant opposition, was from the Kansas Livestock Association, they offered three amendments which we were able to study, and I think agreed to at that time, and now they're going to be neutral on the bill. So hopefully it'll continue and get, get adopted and moved onto the floor. Senate Bill 129 is our elections bill. Our county lobbyist in Topeka is asking that that bill be amended into Senate Bill 130, which there's a hearing on this morning. Haven't heard yet how successful that is. And in addition, our bill, Senate Bill 130, which would allow people to, to vote at any polling place, is getting a hearing on Friday now in the Senate Ethics Elections Committee. So, we have those two things going, we've been tracking other bills, House Bill 2050, which was a bill that would have increased our inmate population, and was opposed by the Cedric County Sheriff, and both the Sheriff's Association and Cedric County testified against, has apparently now been amended in such a way that it's not anymore, it's not objectionable anymore, and it's going to go to the House floor, passed out of committee. The Fire Sprinkler Act, which we opposed, testified against, right now is, is not seeing any action. Senate Bill 3, which we've talked about before, about the appointment, larger counties appointing the election commissioner, it's not having any action, and House Bill 2308, which is the city-county, city of Wichita, Cedric County consolidation bill, which has gotten some publicity also, there hasn't been any action on that bill. And a reminder, next Thursday is turnaround, so some of these bills don't get any action, they're going to just die up in Topeka, so.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Papun? I don't see any questions right now, there's a lot going on in Topeka, and so we will stay on top of it as things move forward. Okay, next item, please.
Other.
Does any of the commissioners have anything to cover during other today? Seeing none, next item, please.
Executive session.
Commissioner Meitzner?[1783.25] for 15 minutes until 10:45 a.m. for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel to consider employment negotiations related to a county employee, and that the Board County Commissioner return to this room from executive session no sooner than 10:45.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Just the basic fire knowledge that I got was really how much further I can push myself physically and mentally than maybe I ever thought I could before.
I've learned so much. One of the great things about being in the academy here at Cedric County is that we have a great opportunity to learn with so many different people.
The hardest part for me was probably adjusting to actual fire scenarios. That's the first time I've ever been in a situation like that where it was actually hot.
We had to get up a slide so we can get a flag, a class flag, and it took us three tries, but finally came up with a plan and able to get it. We all came together as a team. To get everything done, we worked really good together. All the guys we have, great, great people.
We got lots of reps in, lots of live fires, learned what it's actually like to be under heat and perform under stressful situations. Learning to work as a team with eight other individuals on a daily basis.
We had to do like a kind of a confined space training with our air packs in the early weeks. You got to go through pipes, climb upstairs, ladders, all with your full gear on.
You actually got to see firsthand how a building will collapse, and that was awesome.
Doing the controlled burnout in Garden Plain, we got to do some really great training on an actual house. That's training that's hard to beat.
Just did different things, like we would stretch at the beginning of every session, and we could go for a jog, anywhere from mile and a half to maybe two and a half miles. Being part of a team and all of you trying to strive to achieve the same goal and get through something tough together.
And I can't wait to be a part of a job that I just love to go to every day and enjoy thoroughly, and also being able to do something positive in our community.
We are Cedric County Fire District One, recruit编号 1801.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Crafton with the Cedric County Sheriff's Office. Did you know that your first DUI offense can cost you up to $1,000 fine and an automatic six-month suspension of your driver's license? Last year alone, there were nearly 2,000 alcohol-related accidents. Of those, 25% resulted in an injury or loss of at least one life. One in four occupants in a DUI-related accident are either injured or killed as a result of the collision. All DUI accidents can be avoided. When you go out for the evening, plan ahead. Use ride sharing, have a designated driver, or call a family member for a ride home.
Buckle up.
Get a ride home.
And don't drink and drive.
Welcome to Cedric County Division of Corrections. Come join our team. We have an extensive range of facilities and programs. You could work with either adults or juveniles. We have job opportunities at the Juvenile Detention Facility, Juvenile Residential Facility, Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center, Home-Based Supervision, Juvenile Field Services, Adult Field Services, Adult Residential and Work Release Program, and Criminal Justice Alternatives.
My name is Trey Davis, and I'm an intensive supervision officer. I'm on the high-risk team for probation, so I meet with my clients weekly. I help them get jobs, help them get into treatment, make sure they're attending treatment. I go to court for them if they're in jail. I'm basically the middleman between my client and the judge. I do love my job. I like meeting with my clients. It's rewarding when they complete probation, when they get off successfully. It's fun to see them grow into people of society that are successful.
My name is Anna Aguilar, and I'm a correction worker at JDF. I supervise the kids on a daily basis. I hold them responsible for their expectations every day, issue not discipline when they don't follow through with their expectations, and I try to build rapport with them. Always wanted to work with kids directly to try to make a difference in their lives.
My name is Samuel Orban. I'm a senior correction worker here at Juvenile Detention Facility, helping our people, helping our kids, helping out troubled youth, and just getting a good impact out of them with all my experience and all the backgrounds that I've inquired. It takes somebody special to work in this department, and you got to be ready to make a positive change in people's lives because they're going to be back in the community.
Our mission is to provide a continuum of evidence-based correctional services in our community, which promotes public safety and accountability while supporting positive behavior change in an effort to reduce recidivism. Cedric County offers a competitive benefits package, health, dental, and vision insurance, capers retirement plan, 457B pre-tax retirement plan, dependent care and medical flexible spending accounts, vacation leave, sick leave, and ten paid holidays.
Come join us.
Come join us.
Apply now.
Just the basic fire knowledge that I got was really how much further I can push myself physically and mentally than maybe I ever thought I could before.
I've learned so much. One of the great things about being in the academy here at Cedric County is that we have a great opportunity to learn with so many different people.
The hardest part for me was probably adjusting to actual fire scenarios. That's the first time I've ever been in a situation like that where it was actually hot.
We had to get up a slide so we can get a flag, a class flag, and it took us three tries, but finally came up with a plan and able to get it. We all came together as a team. To get everything done, we worked really good together. All the guys we have, great, great people.
We got lots of reps in, lots of live fires, learned what it's actually like to be under heat and perform under stressful situations. Learning to work as a team with eight other individuals on a daily basis.
We had to do like a kind of a confined space training with our air packs in the early weeks. You got to go through pipes, climb upstairs, ladders, all with your full gear on.
You actually got to see firsthand how a building will collapse, and that was awesome.
Doing the controlled burnout in Garden Plain, we got to do some really great training on an actual house. That's training that's hard to beat.
Just did different things, like we would stretch at the beginning of every session, and we could go for a jog, anywhere from mile and a half to maybe two and a half miles. Being part of a team and all of you trying to strive to achieve the same goal and get through something tough together.
And I can't wait to be a part of a job that I just love to go to every day and enjoy thoroughly, and also being able to do something positive in our community.
We are Cedric County Fire District One, recruit编号 1801.
Hello, I'm Sergeant Crafton with the Cedric County Sheriff's Office. Did you know that your first DUI offense can cost you up to $1,000 fine and an automatic six-month suspension of your driver's license? Last year alone, there were nearly 2,000 alcohol-related accidents. Of those, 25% resulted in an injury or loss of at least one life. One in four occupants in a DUI-related accident are either injured or killed as a result of the collision. All DUI accidents can be avoided. When you go out for the evening, plan ahead. Use ride sharing, have a designated driver, or call a family member for a ride home.
Buckle up.
Get a ride home.
And don't drink and drive.
Welcome to Cedric County Division of Corrections. Come join our team. We have an extensive range of facilities and programs. You could work with either adults or juveniles. We have job opportunities at the Juvenile Detention Facility, Juvenile Residential Facility, Juvenile Intake and Assessment Center, Home-Based Supervision, Juvenile Field Services, Adult Field Services, Adult Residential and Work Release Program, and Criminal Justice Alternatives.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. At this time, I'd like to state that during executive session, no action was taken. The other item that we deferred, item Lima, during the regular session, this time I'd like to make a motion that we reopen item Lima. Second?
Yes.
We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
All right, Madam Clerk, call item Lima, please.
Presentation of County Manager's Employment Agreement.
Commissioner Mike Papoon, interim county councillor. I have in my hands an agreement signed by Mr. Stoltz that we discussed in executive session. I'll go over some of the highlights of the agreement, but just by way of a little bit of background, on February 6, the Board of County Commissioners directed me to negotiate with the interim county manager, and I will tell you that we spent quite a bit of time between that directive until now getting an agreement prepared and ready to be signed. I'm sure as will be reflected in Mr. Stoltz's attorney bill. We've had the opportunity in two executive sessions to discuss some of the terms of the agreement. We have also had, I've had an opportunity on several occasions to talk to you individually about different terms, but the executive sessions allowed us to have interactive communication in discussing the terms of the agreement. We have now reached an agreement, and again, I have his signed agreement, and I'll go over some of the salient points of the agreement at this time. Under this agreement, which is by the way, a public document, and as all employment contracts are for public officials, and it'll be available to the press or anybody from the public that wants to see the terms of the agreement, but some of the more important terms of the agreement is that Mr. Stoltz will work exclusively for Cedric County, except he does, he is allowed to do some employment as an adjunct professor if he has that opportunity. The initial term of this agreement is for a period of 18 months or until August 31 of the year 2020. We will do a review prior to that time, and if it's a favorable review, then the agreement can automatically renew under the same terms and conditions for two years or until August 31, 2022. After that, the agreement becomes a one-year agreement and would renew every year. The yearly salary that Mr. Stoltz will get is $180,000. He will, after that, receive the same salary adjustments that are given to other county employees. Additional compensation that he will receive is a car allowance in accordance with county policies and what other employees in similar positions and car allowances will get. He gets a cell phone allowance, same as other county employees in similarly situated positions. At the end of every term of the contract, we have agreed to put $5,000 into, or give him $5,000 to put into a retirement account of his choice, and that's done within 30 days of the end of any term. He will accrue vacation rate at the day, vacation at the rate of two days per month. He will accrue vacation rate at the day, vacation at the rate of two days per month. If he remains county manager for three and a half years, or approximately the first two terms of the agreement, upon separation from the county, for whatever reason, he would get a lump sum of 80 hours of vacation to be added to whatever final lump sum payment was made to Mr. Stoltz. Under the agreement, if we were to terminate the agreement early, if he were to be terminated for reasons other than for cause, we would owe Mr. Stoltz health insurance until, for him and his wife, until he turns 65 years old, unless he had access to other group, another group plan or health insurance. He would be entitled to his $5,000 retirement payment. And we would, for the first two terms, owe him one-year severance pay. No other benefits beyond that, but one-year severance pay. And once it converts to a one-year agreement, the severance would be six months of severance. And I believe that is, are the highlights of the agreement. I'm prepared to answer any questions and put it up for discussion by the bench.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. Are there any questions from the Commissioners on anything that Mr. Papoon mentioned? Seeing nothing, I'd like to open it up to public comment. One thing that we did do last week was we did have a public meeting and had a number of folks attend that. But if there's anyone in the audience today that would like to speak on this item, now is an opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the bench. Commissioner Meitzner.
Yes, I'd just like to thank you for reminding us that we had the public forum. That it was well-attended and Tom, you did a nice job there as well. Also, I just want to, I just want to share that I hadn't, I know that we were very open to having dialogue about pros or cons, about Tom specifically or about the position. And I continued to have numerous unsolicited positive comments about this direction. And I was waiting for the one negative comment to receive, but I never received one directly from anybody in the community. And so I'm fully supportive of this. I don't know if you want to make the motion or maybe I just want to voice anything.
Commissioner Cruz.
I just want to know if we can get a copy of that picture with your long hair. Can we please place that on the county website immediately?
That's part of the contract.
That's part of the contract. Actually, you know what, I should have wrote that in there.
I'll get you a copy of it, but it won't go on the website.
Very good, other comments? Well, I'd like to echo Commissioner Meitzner's comments that after we started discussing this, I was having a great opportunity to go around and visit with folks in the community. That's one of the nice things about being a Commissioner is that we attend a lot of meetings with folks throughout the community. And without fail, ever since we started discussing this and the opportunity to have Tom Stoltz as our permanent county manager, unsolicited, because I made it a point to not ask anyone, unsolicited, over and over and over again, they told us that we were making the right decision. We had, as I said before, we had a public meeting. So the comments have been very positive. I believe that we're going the right direction. There's been a completely different atmosphere in this courthouse in the last couple of months than there had been in the past. And I think that's attributable to the leadership of Tom Stoltz. So I think that we have two new Commissioners on board and I believe that they agree with me. So I'm going to turn it back to Commissioner Meitzner and Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Meitzner.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the contract as provided and move forward with the hiring of Tom on a permanent basis.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
And approve the chairman to sign, sir.
And approve the chairman to sign the napkin.
Very good. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yeah. Well, I just want to thank Tom for your willingness to step up in this role and the interim position. It hasn't been fun. I think it's been a rough year on a number of us. But you've done great. I'm very excited to support this motion. And more importantly, our staff is very excited for you to be taking on this role. So not only is it going to help the community, but the 2,500 to 3,000 people that we employ, they need your leadership. And so we're very, I know myself and speaking for members of the commission that have also expressed their positive feelings of your employment. This is very big for our community. So I just thank you for stepping up and your family because it's going to be obviously a big time commitment. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Congratulations, Tom Stoltz. Does anything else need to come before the Commission today?
I have one, I have one final thing.
Commissioner Cruz.
I just want to remind everybody that the fundraiser for Exploration Place is this weekend, Death by Chocolate. So if you haven't picked up your ticket, please do. It should be fun.
Sounds good. Anything else? Seeing nothing, we all have a luncheon.